Okay. I call this meeting of the Pecosin City Council to order. Apologize to the public for being a couple minutes late as we got going. We've been in a work session up until this time discussing TMDL and road improvement projects. If everybody will stand, I'll do the invocation and we'll recite the pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and we ask your blessing for our nation, our state, and our city. Be with our neighbors, sons and daughters who serve in the military as they serve our nation tonight in foreign lands. We especially ask for your blessings on the families of the many Navy SEALs lost approximately two weeks ago in Afghanistan. Now please be with this body as we deliberate the issues of our city and the citizens in which we serve. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance is given to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice
Okay. We have a couple special presentations this evening. We'll start with the really good news because I'm sure the gentleman from Davenport and Company would only bring us the financial news. But invite up Ms. Sharon Rebels and Ms. Teresa Weaver if you'll join me at the podium.
Thank you, sir. We are here today to present an award to the mayor and the city of Pecosin and Teresa Owens and her team who coordinated a wonderful blood drive back in June. And we do a Mayor's Cup competition between the cities, and this is our 14th annual event. And Pecosin participated for the first time this year, and it was a great addition to our cities involved, and they actually won an award for collecting. The way that we decide the winner is by the percentage of people that donated against your full-time employees number. So we actually collected 46 productive pints of blood, and that means that we collected 34.59% against your full-time employees. So that was a huge turnout, and it was a great event. I was here, and Teresa and her folks and volunteers and donors were all very friendly. We had tons of good food and good times, and we helped save a lot of lives that day. Running a blood drive in the month of June is very helpful to the American Red Cross and the patients in need, as the summertime is one of our hardest collection time periods. A lot of people traveling on vacation and things like that. So to add a blood drive that collects 46 pints to our calendar and a huge success. Our goal was to collect 36, and we collected 46. So we collected 10 over our goal, was a great addition to our calendar, and like I said, helped save many lives in our community. And we'd like to present this Mayor's Cup.
Steamed cup?
Yes. If you see on the side here, it says 2011 City of Pecosin. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you all, and thank you all for your help in putting the event on and the hospitality in which you ran it. I must admit to the citizens that this was the first time that I had actually given blood, I'm ashamed to say. But I wasn't going to let all the employees do it for me. I thought about that. But no, I did. And Teresa, thank you. This cup is mostly yours for doing all the organization, but I believe that every department in the city participated in some form, fashion, or another. So this is truly the city's cup, and we really appreciate it, and we look forward to the competition again next year and see if we can hold on to it.
I hope so. I hope so. I hope to see lots of City Pecosins follow.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll put this here as a reminder of good things, right? Okay. The second presentation is from Davenport and Company, and this is talk about our age-old challenge of refinancing and management of money.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's good to see everybody tonight. I apologize that I didn't come with a trophy nor any other hardware, but hopefully I come bearing good news.
Well, you can come give blood next year with us if you would like.
Let me know the date. I'll be here. We do come bearing good news tonight. As you know, many of your faces we've seen before, some we've relatively new. But we, at Davenport, as your financial advisor, are going to constantly watch the markets, constantly watching your debt portfolio for opportunities to refinance for savings purposes. And as many of you, I'm sure, have been watching the news recently, a lot of the events admittedly not always positive for sort of other aspects of the economy and the financial markets have actually translated into some positive opportunities for us at the city in that we think we have an opportunity to refinance some of the existing debt for savings purposes. What we mean by that is we've identified there's a 2009 loan that right now has about $2.8 million outstanding on it. The rate is a 450, and what we've done is we've looked at where the current market is. We feel we're a couple different avenues and potential ways to refinance that, basically to bring the rate down, keep the same final maturity, just like you would if you're thinking about a mortgage, that you wanted to refinance for savings purposes to bring your payment down. Same general concept applies here. What we've done thus far is we have, we've basically looked at two potential financing options for purposes of refinancing this loan. The first is to participate in the Fall Virginia Resources Authority pool financing program. It's a state-sponsored program that issues bonds twice a year on behalf of localities that pool all the bonds together, go out in the public marketplace, and issue one sort of big set of pool bonds. That's something we need to put an application in for. We've done that, so we kind of have a placeholder for that. I will say that, just kind of skipping ahead, we don't even make any final decisions tonight on moving forward or not moving forward or which option we choose, but we've put our name in the hat, and we have a spot basically in that Fall VRA pool to be able to enact the refinancing through that. Second option we've looked at, which is one we've used successfully many times in the past, is to look to the bank marketplace via what we call a private placement. We're able to access monies of what are called bank-qualified interest rates, which gets us a little bit of a tax advantage to the bank, which then gets passed on to us in the form of a lower interest rate. That's sort of the second strategy that we're working right now to eventually bring back to you in comparison to the VRA strategy and make a decision at basically your next council meeting as to which option looks better, based on, and the nice advantage about the bank private placement route is we can actually solicit those bids, we can get them back in, we can know specifically what the rate is, we can know what the prepayment terms are, all the other terms and conditions, and come back to you with that knowledge firmly in hand to be able to make a decision at that point and really compare apples to apples as to how things look. Just to give you a sense of sort of the economics, as I mentioned, the rate right now is a 450 on the existing loan. It goes out to fiscal year 2029, so about 17, 18 years left to run. We think right now through a VRA refinancing strategy, that rate could come down into somewhere in the three, high 3% range. That translates into savings of about $250,000, and on a net present value basis, which is just kind of a financial way of measuring cash flows over a long time period, that translates to 6.35% net present value savings. That, you compare that to the industry standard as we kind of look at these refinancings, is a 3% net present value savings. So we're basically right now, and this could change, but we're right now about double where we'd look to as our typical minimum threshold for wanting to move forward on refinancing. So we're in good shape. You know, it's one of those that it's not necessarily, the eggs haven't hatched yet, and it's sort of the classic, don't count your chickens before they hatch. So we'll need to kind of work through the process. We'll need to get bids back in from the bank, need to kind of monitor the public marketplace. And what we're planning on doing is coming back to you at your next city council meeting, which would be on the 12th of September, with results from the banks, so we can know specifically what they can or can't do, and a sense at that point of where the market is for the VRA refinancing. At that point, we can kind of compare apples to apples, which option looks better, and move forward at that point with the option that looks better to us. Another nice advantage of this coming up right now is that there is the Public Works Building project that we've been aware of, and with rates where they are right now, it's a nice time to build lock-in funds for capital project, if indeed there is one like the Public Works Building. What we'd be able to do is we could add that into the refinancing, be it with the private placement strategy or the VRA strategy. The nice part is that we get economies of scale in that way, in that if you're going to go ahead and finance it at some point, it makes some sense to go ahead and do it while you're going through another process, get the economies of scale, don't have to pay sort of cost of issuance twice, pool it all together, and lock in rates, hopefully where they are right now, which is at very favorable levels. With that said, in terms of next steps, as I mentioned, we'll be back to you at your September 12th meeting. We'll have the bids in hand, be able to compare apples to apples, know really what the market looks like. We'd also hold a public hearing with your approval that night for the new money portion. It's about $600,000 for the Public Works Building. From there, if the bank strategy looks better to us, we'd look to close basically by probably the end of the month, realistically probably within a couple weeks of September 12th. If the VRA strategy looks better to us, they go out and they price their bonds early November, so we'd know what those rates were, they'd get locked in early November, and would close sometime around Thanksgiving. So it's kind of in terms of process, that's where we're heading. The markets do look good right now. It looks like they'll hang in there, but I think as anybody's been watching the news recently can see, things can change quickly. So it's one of those that, not quite counting the chickens before they hatch yet, but it looks pretty good at this point. So be happy to entertain. Any questions?
When you say apply for the VRA, that implies to me that there's somebody that can say, "No, you can't do it," or is that just a matter of paperwork?
It's, at this point, it's more of a matter of paperwork. You get a kind of, you have to go through the process so they can do their credit work, decide exactly how the loan's going to get structured. It's a very flexible program, but you do kind of have to, it's an application that kind of gets your name in the queue.
But there is money in the VRA, or?
Yes. Yeah. What VRA does is they take all the local loans and they pool it together and kind of one, you want to think about it, is a variety of local loans that get pooled together into one bigger loan that they go out and issue in the public marketplace.
Indicating our interest in participating in that does not bind us to, in fact, participating in it, right?
The 16th of September is when VRA would really like to know whether we're in or not. So by that point, we will have been back to you with the results, and we can tell them, you know, if we would like to go forward or not.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
Good.
Kyle, thank you and thank your company for monitoring and communicating with our finance department. Y'all have always led us well as far as our financings. I can tell you that you've saved our taxpayers millions of dollars over the last five to eight years. Tremendous job that your company does, a tremendous service to our community, and I want to make sure that you take that message back to the company. We're very, very pleased with your leadership.
We thank you very much and look forward to hopefully adding to that total here the next month or so.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. I think we've received an award tonight. We've received some financial news, and I guess finally we have something to give. Deborah Blackstock, do you want to join me at the podium?
How you doing this evening? Good, good.
For those of you that do not know, this is Deborah Blackstock, and she's been a member of the Library Advisory Board since August of 2007. We'd like to recognize her service and basically present you with a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. And with all the presentations out of the way, it opened up the podium to the audience for visitors. If anybody would like to address council on any issue, this would be the time to do that. All right. Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of the minutes. If I could ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the July 25, 2011 regular session.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on those minutes? Not, Judy?
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. I'll move forward into the next session, which is a pair of public hearings. The first one is on a resolution approving Hampton Roads Regional Water Supply Plan for submission to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. The staff presentation.
Ellen, do you want to say a few words and introduce our guest?
I'm here to introduce David Morris, who's representing Newport News Waterworks. He's the Natural Resources Manager for Waterworks, and I was fortunate enough to meet him when I went to Environment, Virginia. He was a, provided a great deal of information. And basically, what's going on with this regional water supply plan is every locality in the state of Virginia is required to adopt a long-range plan for their water supply. And since we are lucky enough to have Newport News Waterworks supplying our water, David's here to answer the questions.
David, before you say a word, let me thank the city of Newport News and Newport News Waterworks for always being a very solid performer in the delivery of our most important resource, which is fresh water. Y'all do a great job with that service, and the city of Pecosin does appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. I'll relay that to my coworkers as well. I'm here to answer any questions or can explain any part of the plan as needed. As Ellen said, it's required by all cities and counties. We all elected to do a regional plan, gave us more time, and we pulled together as a Hampton Roads read, and the plan has four components. The whole of the lower Virginia peninsula is one of those four pieces of the plan.
Does anybody have any questions on the plan? Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open the floor to a public hearing. If any citizen is interested in speaking on this subject, now is the time to do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I request for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the Hampton Roads Regional Water Supply Plan for submission to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality.
Second. Motion made in second. I don't believe there's any other comments forthcoming, so Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, council. I guess the next item under public hearings is the receipt of written bids for the lease and/or purchase of publicly owned property located at Mesic Point. In the information of council, we have received two bids, and I'll open them now and state Okay. The first bid is from Michael Diggs.
Do we need to summarize this for the public?
Summarize. Go right ahead.
Mr. Diggs writes in his letter, in pertinent part, Mr. Diggs is an adjacent property owner. He would offer a bid of $30,000 to purchase a land or rental fee. It is decided to rent only, agreed upon by myself, so to be considered, subject to further negotiations, but that is the essence of his bid.
Okay. And the second bid is from Port Mesic LLC, and if you want to summarize that, it looks like it's in here.
First, let me see what we have. Okay, these look like attachments. Port Mesic LLC, the purchaser is requesting a lease for two years with an option to purchase. During the lease period, the submitter, he is offering $1,100 per month to lease the property. The purchase price, which as I understand it from this read, would, the agreement would be to lease with the option to purchase, so that at any time during the two years, the property at 380 Mesic, they're offering to purchase it for $225,600. There are, it is a 10-page document. I believe I've hit the most pertinent points of the sale. The rest of it appears to be representations back and forth, selling, and settlement provisions and other things. Mr. Mayor, given the length of the document, my suggestion is that staff provide a summary along with copies of both bids to members of council, and come back at your next meeting, present to you the pertinent points of each.
I agree. Do we need to postpone the public hearing then? Okay. So if council's in agreement that we probably need to get some time to think about the two bids, can I have a motion to postpone the public hearing?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion made in second that we postpone the consideration of the written bids for lease and/or purchase of publicly owned property at Mesic Point. Judy, can you please?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. I think you should announce to the public that the bids will be in the city manager's office, open for inspection, if there's any member of the public that wants to review those bids.
What he said.
Yes, what he said.
But I'll repeat that. This is all public information. It's all above board, and the bids are available for your review at the city manager's office at any time during the business day. Okay. Next item is one under unfinished business, and this is an ordinance amending the sign ordinance regarding the size and height of signs and the number of signs allowed for corner lots in the commercial district. And this is the second reading.
Staffs here, if you would like a summary presentation, recall Sherri Coffey was here at your last meeting, did a very extensive and very well-done presentation on this issue, but we can summarize again if you'd like. Otherwise, it's ready for your consideration.
Counsel, I need takers on more information. Anybody in here to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the sign ordinance by revising Section 3 permitted signs.
Second. Second. Okay. Motion made in second. Since there's no request for additional information, I think we're ready to move to the vote. Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Now we're moving to the section of the agenda under new business, and the first is a resolution authorizing the replacement of a debris truck and ordinance appropriating the funding.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you will call this from previous conversations. The city currently uses a total of three debris trucks, which are those large public works vehicles with the crane-like attachment or the claw attachment on the back. All of our vehicles have some age on it, one of which is 10 years old, but as Mr. Jones points out to you, and he's here to answer your questions, it's not just the mileage, but it's the actual use. These vehicles are picking heavy objects up and moving them. We have sufficient money in the solid waste fund reserved for the replacement of this truck. It takes several months for a replacement truck to come onboard. You may recall that now that we're doing the every-other-week convenience site, we actively have all three of our trucks in operation at any one time, and also in the event of a severe weather issue, it's these trucks that are the ones that are out picking the debris off the street, and, you know, we have an opportunity to replace one and to ride a bid from a neighboring locality, which is at a very favorable price, and so we bring it to you for your consideration. Mr. Jones, would you like to add to that?
Just to ditto what you said about, you know, the way we use our trucks, we use them, you know, pretty much every day. And with the new programs that have come about, and I do want to say that we have had multitudes of compliments, you know, for our two new programs, and I think that goes a long way to, you know, what you guys have done, helped, you know, do for the citizens. But these trucks run all the time, and a lot of people don't realize, you know, when you pull up to a pile, no matter what you're picking up, you know, a lot of you do, but these trucks rev up for long periods of time, so the mileage on them is kind of deceiving. You know, they're, they run all the time, and every other Saturday, you know, we have a very large turnout, and it's coming to, you know, close to 200 people sometimes dropping things off, and we use them quite often, so, you know, and there, we've got a couple of older trucks, and, you know, we kind of patch them up. I've got two right now that are being worked on, you know, as we speak, so.
Mr. Jones, is our oldest vehicle have any, are you talking about trading it in or retiring it, or does it have any trade-in value, or is it just young?
Well, you know, the truck's still operable. I mean, it's, you know, we do work on it, but we could trade it in, but I tell you, as much as when we have these storms, it's always good to have a backup sitting there.
Okay. So you're going to keep it as a backup?
These trucks are high-maintenance trucks, and, you know, when something goes wrong with them, sometimes it takes a while to get parts to them, but it's always good to have, you know, some backups. It's many times that, you know, we've needed, you know, an extra truck or, you know, so I think we ought to hang on to it if, you know, and I'll, you know, if we are able to replace it, you know, we'll talk it over with the garage, you know, personnel.
So basically, you're going to run it till it dies?
I would like to hold on to it as a backup.
Yeah, I was just curious. Which means exactly?
I just thought I'd get it down to words we could all understand.
Do you know, Tom, if the parts from the 2001 will be still good in the older model trucks? Or is it just, you know, I mean, could you take them, cannibalize? There are some parts interchangeable, if that's what you're speaking of. There are a few parts interchangeable, but, you know, we keep our trucks, all our trucks, in the best shape possible because we know it's a long time before we ever can replace them, so we've tried to keep up with them as, you know, the best that we can, but it's just getting to the point now where, you know, just the mileage thing has pretty much got us, the age of them, but when that truck goes away, you know, when we do have to get rid of it, we'll use whatever we can off of it before we release it. If that answers your question. As I recall, these trucks were the ones, these trucks have not only served our city, but they've served other cities as well. I know that these were the trucks that we took down to Florida, I believe. We took them to Pascagoula, Mississippi. We've taken them to Suffolk. We've taken them to Williamsburg, and with you guys' support, we have never charged any other locality a penny for us going, and we've always had volunteers of guys that wanted to come and support other communities, and, you know, that's some of the things that a lot of people don't realize, but, you know, they've gone many a mile.
I'm ready with a motion if there's no other discussion.
Okay.
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the contract for purchase of a debris truck.
Motion made in second, and I don't think we'll have any discussion. I think everybody's supportive of this. So Judy?
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. The next item under new business is a, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional preparations for fiscal year 2011 and '12.
Second. Hey, motion made in second to adopt the ordinance in addition to the resolution. Okay. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Now, try on the consideration of employee compensation. You want to talk to what you've got presented here for us to consider, which is for the voting public numbers, or this is a... voting public numbers, or this is a consideration of basically looking out for a most valuable asset, which is our employees. And four can, four options of how to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be pleased to summarize the memo. And I would also note for you a request to consider either incorporating additional element into the motion or as a standalone addition to the agenda. I'll summarize the memorandum first. Council members will recall, I believe it was in August of last year, this council considered whether or not it would be appropriate and to make some sort of compensation adjustment for city employees. And the memorandum that you have in the package, at least the first page of it, parallels and updates the same issues that the council considered last year. For example, and in every number in here, in terms of amount, obviously is, is an example. You could amend it as you think is appropriate. But the first issue, as you considered it last year and also bringing it forward, is a one-time adjustment, and by that, that is bureaucratic speak, for bonus, one-time adjustment. What you, what we proposed and what you all approved last year was a thousand dollars per full-time city employee and five hundred dollars per permanent part-time employee. If you were to replicate the one-time adjustment that you did last year, updating it to this year, the impact in the current year would be a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. You'll recall that we plus that up, so the amount of the check is actually a thousand dollars. So the appropriation is a little more than a thousand dollars per employee. Members of council will recall, as you discussed at your retreat in July, and also as you, in akin to how you implemented the current year's budget, in current year's budget, you provided the exact same dollar amount to the schools for their uses, as the school board deemed appropriate. So if you're wishing to do that for each of the first three options, the cost to do the city and the schools is simply twice the listed amount. So one forty-six plus one forty-six. The second alternative, which you briefly considered last year, but this seemed to get the least amount of traction, was actually providing a pay raise in the current year as modeled last year and brought forward this year. If you were to do a pay raise as opposed to a one-time adjustment in the current year and beginning that and prorating it in December, December first, the cost in the current fiscal year, eighty-six thousand dollars on the city side, full year cost in the following year, because pay raises replicate from one year to the next, one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And similar amounts, should you choose to do so, could be allocated to schools. Alternative three is the version that the council ultimately decided last year was the appropriate course of action, which is really a hybrid of the two. What you did last year, and what this option discusses, is a one-time adjustment in the current year in the amounts previously indicated. Be then turned into a permanent adjustment following fiscal year. The cost in that case, again, at the thousand and five hundred dollar level, estimated at one hundred and forty-six thousand in the current fiscal year, two, one hundred and fifty-six thousand rolling forward into the following fiscal year, FY thirteen. And again, should you choose to do so, consistent on your actions and the adoption of this year's budget, and in some of your discussion at your retreat, you could provide same amounts of monies to schools. One option that is addition to what you considered last year, and this was here, following up a question that the mayor had asked, is just a different way to do, to do it. But the question, and was originally posed to the superintendent to try to get an understanding of sort of how things work, because their salary scale is different, in addition to the fact that they have more employees than we have. The question regards the cost of a two percent pay adjustment. So think permanent adjustment, but done on a percentage basis rather than a fixed amount basis, effective September the first. For us, the cost there is one hundred and fifty-four thousand in the current year at two percent. The full year cost in two thirteen is one hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred dollars. And the schools division's estimated impact for a full year is two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So those are the three alternatives that you considered from last year, brought forward and updated, plus the addition of the percentage. You'll see some things to consider as it relates to each one of those. Some have long-term impacts, some do not. This is also a time, as you recall, where we find ourselves perpetually among the bottom of the original pay scales. And as some of you have said, it's worth at least considering that some of the best time to catch up is when others aren't moving. And so that's, that's an issue to consider, of course. And just so that, you know, sort of wrap up the thought, the source of potential funding for this is the same as the source of potential funding and ultimate funding for both last year and, and a portion of the current year's budget, is the general fund balance. You have an amount in excess of your fund balance guidelines in your general fund balance. And any of the amounts here referenced in alternatives one, two, three, or four are within your capacity to fund within that amount of money in your fund balance. I would note to you, however, to the extent that you might do something that go transfers from one year to the next, there is a compounding effect of, of that. It is likely that the fund balance would be a portion, would be a source of at least a portion, if not all, of that funding in fiscal year two thirteen as well.
One option, four, the total number would be four fifty-eight, five hundred, adding those two numbers. So just under a mill.
That would be the full year fiscal.
Four fifty-eight for the full year.
If, if we were to do it effective September first, you would take the, the one fifty-four and the two sixty-eight. Schools do their, they're paid differently, so their number's a full year cost, but their full year is essentially from September, because of the way they do contracts, the most. So the total cost would be four, slightly more than four.
Four twenty-two.
But I would note that.
It's substantially more than one, two, and three.
I would note also that, and you know this, but for the people that may be watching, the city council has the authority to appropriate to the schools. How the school boards might choose to, to use any money to appropriate for them is a matter for them.
I understand.
Does any figure in the four alternatives, taking into account the eighty thousand plus that city council appropriated to the schools last year for salary increases? Or is it, we just starting over again?
This is, this is a brand-new look at the same issue. But to answer your question, the eighty thousand dollars that you all appropriated went into the base from which these percentages were figured. So you're, you got an extra two percent in this number based on that.
For the schools.
That's correct. But this is, this is all post-July first of this calendar year.
So this would be a raise based on the raise?
Yes. I need to ask a better answer to the question.
Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, the total salary, right, included, yeah.
Personally, I favor alternate four, because I really don't feel like last year we were actually being fair to the school system in that you give them the same dollar amount, but they're spreading it amongst so many more employees. And it does address, like Randy said, and the issues to consider, it does address the problem that we've faced forever, and that's that our pay scales are so much lower than our neighbors. So I personally favor alternate four, two percent across the board, city employees and school employees.
Well, then again, these are the four alternates, alternatives that have been provided. I mean, if you want to groom in between, that's fine. The one thing I, I would point out is we consider, if we consider option four, and I certainly understand your reason, I really do, the school employees are a shared asset between us and the state. And the state is not giving anything towards them. So they're not just city employees, they're, they're, they are the school board's employees that are funded fifty percent by us and fifty percent by the state. And I hate to take away the state's incentive to give their employees a raise. And I'll also note that the state has given raises in the past to teachers where we have not given them our own employees raises.
Well, I think the same could be said the other way around, too. I can remember times when we gave the city employees raises and nothing to the school system, so.
I just don't let the state off the hook.
I don't think, I don't think that we're helping the situation by taking the same stance that the state does. I don't want to mistreat the school system employees like the state does. And I don't think just the city of Pecoson making a statement by doing that is going to change what the state does while one iota.
I agree. And additionally, those people were hired by the city of Pecoson School System, not by the state. And I know that the salary form was based, like you said, but they are, you know, we can stretch it, but they are city employees.
Employees of the school board.
Yeah, but that's the Pecoson City School Board.
But the, I will tell you that if, if we pick option alternate, alternative four, that's quite a bit more money than what we were talking about before. And we do have a difficult budget year. So I'm all about sending the right message, and I'm going to support whatever council puts forward. I can tell you that also. The question is that we're all going to pay for whichever alternate, alternative we present.
It's over a hundred and fifty thousand difference.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference, which would buy a debris truck, which would buy basically a loan payment, basically, there's, there's lots of needs in the city, you know. All about sending the right signal, but I don't want to overspend either.
Well, and I don't either. But I think we've got to face facts that we, at some point in time, we've got to get our salary scales where they need to be.
That's, that's why we're here.
And I know it's just for one year, but there's a potential savings in the garage project that we'd pay for it for this year.
I also think we're talking about trying to draw more people to town and, you know, business development to get more people here. I think the schools probably account for a larger percentage of our population than economic development at this time. I think more people have come here in the past with schools. And I'm not real sure that they're still doing that. So I think, you know, putting money into schools is just a good overall investment.
We're not, we're not, we're putting money into the teachers. So we're not putting money into the schools, we're putting money, because I don't want anybody, there's also some other headlines that deal with schools, so I don't want anybody to think that this solves other issues. And I agree wholeheartedly that we need to move our salary scales up. I simply want the state, and we've, I had this conversation today with our state senator, that we want a signal from the state that says that those employees are important to them outside. And we're the only ones doing this, and we already came up to fifty percent of the schools' expenses last year, up from forty-two. So if you want to talk about how much the locality is paying additional per teacher right now, it's, it's more than this two percent. We've made up five percent of their salary in the last five years, plus what we're doing here. And the state is getting the benefit of what the locality is doing. So I'm not about punishing teachers or anything else. I just want it well-understood that you've taken the highest of the options to do that, and we're going to pay that piper for many, many years. I like to move. I don't like to move at a pace that I, that I'm fearful we can't maintain.
Gene, just, just a comment from this end of the dial. I think what Randy said a few minutes ago is fact, and I don't know if you heard it correctly, but even though we fund the school board with additional monies, it doesn't necessarily mean that money will go to the school teachers. Okay? We don't, we don't control that.
Could I just start? I don't have any reason to think this won't be what they do. But it is. Just want to point out that it is, it is their decision.
It's, it's their decision. And the fact is, we've heard from the school boards that they have some really rough economic issues they're going to have to deal with. If you read the newspaper last week, you saw that. And we do not know what the school board's going to have to do relative to the schools. And, and my impression is, any option above option one also addresses out-year pay increases. That would also help the, the total pay for all the city employees and the school board, should, should we pass one of those options, which would help make our pay system a little bit more equivalent or better stance and standing to the other localities. I think we need to do, get better relative to the other cities, so I, I think we need to do something other than maybe option one. But, you know, I, I see nothing wrong with option two or three. And these aren't good economic times. Next year, we stand to have a tighter budget than we had this year. So I, I think we would do well to give ourselves opportunity to see what we do way out in the extended future. And I, I, I'm in favor of doing something for all the city employees. I'm in favor of doing more than option one, and I, I'm in favor of option two. But.
I got a, I got a problem with giving a quarter of a million dollars on top of eighty-six thousand that was given earlier this year. Which is what we talked about.
Oh, okay. So you're, you're saying that basically we've already given eighty-six thousand dollars to the schools? Is that what you're, you're talking about? We gave eighty-six thousand dollars for pay increases?
Increases.
To make up for the fact that we did it for the city employees the year before, basically saying, so this would account, either option, alternative two or three would be the second raise to the city school personnel within the same fiscal year, is what you're saying? Right?
Second for all of these.
Second for.
For everybody. Not just the schools, but for all city employees.
So that's why I'm saying, to me, it sounds to me like I'd prefer, my personal opinion is, we ought to stick with what we did in the past, we were successful with. And I understand what you're saying, but I think we ought to stay to either alternative two or three.
Three worked well last year for, for the city, I think. I don't think we had problems last year's budget.
I think it sends, I think it sends a message. It doesn't send all the money.
Correct.
But it's still more than any locality is doing on this peninsula in this fiscal year. And I agree, we have more round, more room to catch up. I don't think it's going to be any different next year, and maybe we have the opportunity to catch up another step.
We are never going to catch up to some locations, some localities.
We just want to get within the, we just want to get in within the noise.
Yeah. I, I hear you.
Time for night, that's it.
Whatever.
I just don't think that alternative is fair to teachers. Are you, are you looking for a motion?
I don't know what we're looking for, because there's nothing attached here. That's one thing, but I think the discussion can continue. I guess really they're looking, staff is looking for what to bring us back.
I think you could handle this through a, a motion right now, if you chose to. You just have to articulate specifically what it was. And we have every conference, the city council votes, which decide on one, that when we bring the appropriation resolution back in two weeks, that that's where it will be. If you're comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with moving forward with one of them.
I move that we move forward with alternate four.
I have, I'll second it, and then I have a question. What was the unappropriated fund balance above the fifteen percent, do you remember? Why don't we call that number?
Teresa should have it.
It was nearly a half million, wasn't it? More than a half million now?
Oh, yeah. That's one point, one point one, something like that.
That's above our fifteen percent reserve that we hold.
Teresa, what was it in? Teresa, what was it in July when the council saw it last, and then you can update us from there?
Okay.
Because I haven't seen what you're about to present.
Sorry. Seven hundred and eighty-six thousand.
In July.
And that, and that does include the three hundred thousand dollars for the contingency.
For what?
For the fuel contingency.
The contingency of the fuel contingency.
Okay, seven eighty-six, and that does include the three hundred thousand.
It's taken off of that, so it's a hundred and, a hundred, uh, one million, I'm sorry, one million dollars.
Okay, that's what I remember, so it's...
So, that's above the fifteen percent, a million above our normal balance that we hold in our account?
Yes.
Okay.
Normal.
So, we're talking about about a half million here for employees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Teresa's itching to give you an updated number.
No, no, I'm not.
Is there an updated number?
We're fine, I mean, no.
That's, that's the other number.
It's a better number, it's a better number.
Okay, so you need to clear the better number, but you're still at the July, it's no worse than the one point one million.
Correct.
Okay. And, but I'll, basically to remind council what we're up against next year, just so we all don't come back next year and go, oh, how did we, how did we overlook that? The schools had two million dollars' worth of risk at the end of, that they were looking at next year, two million dollars, that we may be asked to fork up a portion of. And then the, the city itself had about a million dollars of risk.
I think my number was...
Maybe it was a little, maybe a...
My number was new debt coming on for previously issued debt, which was...
Six hundred thousand.
I'm seeing...
No, I'm looking at fund balance, I'm sorry.
The, off the top of my head, the, the things that drive our budget, in addition to anything you may do tonight, which are in sort of inescapable, are new debt requirements, and if I'm remembering correctly, with slightly more than four hundred thousand dollars.
And that included the Public Works Building?
Including the Public Works Building, which is something you've already decided on.
Mm-hmm.
And healthcare, which is a big question mark. Those two issues, and then the, the most profound issue, of course, you talked about in your work session.
The EPA.
That, both the consent order stuff and, and the, the TMDL stuff are federal mandates that are coming our way, that while we love the intent, our love for the impacts of the intent, the fiscal impact stops with that statement. And that's where we stand.
So, if we go, if we go forward with this, we're going to have to fund all of that, any risk. Basically, if you take the next year's salary out of that, then you'll have to pay for every other risk with tax money, to pay for two years of this. Whereas I think we'll get about four with the other options. Okay, so we have a motion made, second, any other discussion?
I would just say that I don't think there's any more important investment that we can make than in our people, and that includes the school system. The quality of, of the city staff, the quality of the teaching staff ultimately depends on them being fairly compensated. And I think we all know that there are people who are nearing retirement, shall we say, in both city and school, and when you try to replace them, you're going to have to be in a competitive market. As late as last week, there was a third grade teaching position open here that had not been filled. That's really unusual, so I, I'm sure it's been taken care of now, but it's not the people standing in line for teaching positions as some people may think in other phases of the economy.
And again, I want to make it clear that online, as I ask for option four to be evaluated, I will support option four if that's the way that the majority of council goes. But I do believe that the price tag was more than I had anticipated.
It is a right hefty price, but I agree that it's probably worth it as an investment.
Okay, any other comments? Uh, Gene?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
No.
Councilman Southall.
I know I'm being slow, and I, I'm in favor of treating our people fairly. I'm concerned about the cost that we just discussed in the work session before this Many people wa- watching this right now didn't see that session, and we talked about costs possibly reaching five hundred dollars per person, per year, per family, you know, everybody watching this needs to think that, you know, you could have to pay five hundred dollars a person for every member of your family. Those are costs that we might get hit with, and we don't know whether we'll be hit with them or not.
Those are federal government dictated.
They're federally dictated, but the taxpayers looking at us are going to have to pay those, possibly.
Okay, so you got that, you got, okay, so...
We, we may, we may have to pay those.
Okay.
And, and we have to be fiscally responsible to all the citizens, and I would like to do option four, given the current budget situation and the fact that we, we have compensated the employees a little this year, not enough, I recognize it's not enough, and I recognize they're not being paid enough. There's a lot of people out there working for us that are underpaid, and I'll tell you that you are. But I'm concerned about our ability to afford it. I would hope the con- the economy turns around, and I would like to see you all fairly paid. I don't think we pay you enough. I think option two, which is what we did last year, giving you the bonus this year, plus that being made permanent years after that, is, is not enough, but it's a step in the right direction, and it's something that we may be better to afford depending on what the EPA hits us with. And if the economy gets better next year, then I would be the first to stand up and say, it really wasn't enough, let's do it again next year, and let's do it better than that.
Okay.
For that reason, I'm going to have to vote no on issue, this issue, and I, I just would prefer a different option.
Okay.
I apologize to you for giving that no vote.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
No.
Mr. Mayor, the motion failed for lack of a majority vote.
Okay, does anybody have another motion that they would like to make?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose alternative two as the option for this year.
Is there a second?
What's the appropriate procedure, should I...
No, no, he's, he's asked me to give him time to consider your motion.
The, if I can ask a question for a second, that's permissible?
Sure.
Difference between alternative two and three, Mr. City Manager?
The difference between alternatives two and three is that in the, in the second of the two, excuse me, to be clear, alternative three, using the example that we had, a full-time employee of the city would get a one thousand dollar, one-time adjustment, soon, I'd say in the next couple of weeks. And then his or her salary would be permanently adjusted next fiscal year, so you'd have two costs.
Right, okay.
In the, in the alternative two, instead of getting the thousand dollar check, your permanent salary changes. So, if you're an employee that made twenty thousand dollars a year, divided over twenty-six pay periods.
Fifty-two, yeah, okay.
It would now be twenty-one thousand over, over the remaining pay periods, in, at least in this example, of December first, it would be, you know, roughly twenty, well, that's twenty-six, probably fourteen pay periods. So, what you would get in the first year, over the course of that many paychecks...
You'd get your thousand dollars instead of the odd and odd thousand.
You would get essentially seven-twelfths of the thousand dollars, because we would just change your salary, your basic salary level. So, it's less expensive in the short run, and, but instead of getting a, a one-time bonus check, you would simply see an incremental increase in your paycheck.
So, it'd be the best benefit to the employee for which of the two?
I think alternative three is what we did last year.
And alternative three's the one you just said would only be appropriated for the rest of the pay period?
No, no.
That's option two.
That's option two.
Which is what you made the motion for. Do you, do you mean to make a motion for option two or option three?
Well, I, I misunderstood, I think option three was the one that I was trying to go with.
That's the one that you did.
So, I have a, I have a motion on the floor for option three.
He can amend his own motion.
I'll amend it to option three.
I can second, I can second that.
Because I was looking for the most benefit. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded for alternative three, which is a one-time adjustment in twenty-twelve, and a permanent adjustment then in twenty-thirteen in the form of a pay raise.
Yes.
But then you're talking only about the city employees. The school system will get a one-time one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
Including all the bus drivers and all the cafeteria workers and all the, yes.
Which, to me, makes it more unfair, because now you're giving the city employee a raise, but you're giving the school system a one-time...
Amount.
Of the same amount that we're doing just this year.
Can I...
Okay, well, I've got a question to make sure I understood what you said. Under alternative three, we got a hundred and forty-six for the rest of this year, and a hundred and fifty-six for next year.
Correct.
Or three oh two for the city side.
Three oh two for the city side.
Okay, now, the school division says a like amount, and define that for me, please.
So, it'd be six oh four, but that's over two years. So, it's six oh four over two years versus four fifty-eight.
So, this like amount would be the three oh two that the school would get.
But the like amount would be going to the school.
But you're going over two years instead of the one year.
Right, I understand, yeah.
That was my intent in drawing it up, is that if, if the council were to approve this option, that whatever the amount was, it would carry over into the school-based budget, local appropriation transfer into next year.
And it would be a second raise within the same fiscal year for all of those employees.
For everybody.
That's correct.
For all employees, yeah.
Though not equal. It would be a second raise within the same fiscal year for all of our employees, and yet gives us some flexibility, so. All right, any other discussion?
Six oh four over two years then total.
Right. All right, so a motion made and seconded, any other discussion? Okay, Gene?
Councilman Green.
I don't think it's fair, but I'll settle for something for that boy.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
I'd rather had option four as well, but this seems to be the only thing we're going to get tonight, so I...
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask...
Let me, let me, let me come back and clarify that. That was very difficult, and I appreciate all of the points that council made, and I, I hear every one of them, both on both sides of alternative four. I think the important message is that we all believe, from the votes, from even the people that took alternative four as a first, that we all recognize the importance of our employees. The difference in what council just did is how much can we afford? And that's really what it comes down to. How much do we feel like we can afford? And I would tell you that if the number comes back that the unappropriated fund balance went up some more at a later time, I am not opposed to revisiting this as money comes along. But I just wanted to make that clear, because I don't want anybody in, on council upset with each other, nor do I want the employees to think that, that we're not looking out for. Okay. Yeah.
Didn't mean to jump in too early.
No, you're fine.
Council members may recall from reading the memo, the fourth of the four bulleted points on page two is a discussion, once again, of an issue we discussed in July at your retreat, and we discussed it in January of this year and last year as well. The city's current pay plan, by that, I mean job, specifically, I mean job classifications in Fair Labor Standards Act classifications are outdated, they are, they, my, my oldest son will turn twelve in a couple of weeks, and, and our system came to life before he was born. And your policy suggests, your personnel policy and good practice suggests frequent updates to that probably every few years, make sure that job descriptions accurately reflect the duties of the employee, both what they're doing and also what they should be doing, as, as Councilman Southall had commented to me earlier, and also that it's these job descriptions that are the basis for Labor Standards, Fair Labor Standards Act classifications, make sure that people are being treated correctly under law. And so, I would ask you to consider, and a resolution is at your place, to give me to go ahead to do that, if I can find the money within the general fund, and this is important to all of our department heads, so if we've got to go into our individual pencil and paperclip budgets to cobble it together enough money to do it, I'd like to do it, I'd ask for you to allow me to do it. Now, I want to be clear, one of the things that this, that has held us up in the past is that a full-blown study includes pay plan adjustments and all of that. All I'm asking for is the authority to move forward, to update the job descriptions in the Fair Labor Standards Acts. We have gotten further and further away from what we should be doing, because there's a part two that's very, very expensive. We may get to the point where we need to do that, but we need to make sure our job descriptions are accurate and fair, and our Fair Labor Standards Act classifications are, are accurate going forward. We can decide the other thing at a future, at a future date. Because we can't afford the pay plan element of it right now, there's really no reason to wait thirteen years to, to update this, in my opinion, so I would ask you to give me the authority to locate the money within the general fund if I can and do this.
But then the, when you say the general fund, are you talking about within the general fund of your existing budget or the general fund unappropriated fund balance?
The operating budget, not the fund balance. So, you know, we'll go up, we'll go to the army of the willing, and we'll say, Dave Callis, how much do you have in Parks and Recreation, and Tom, and myself, and Graham, and others, to cobble together with our, with our current operating budgets. Let us find, let us find the money if we can.
Graham's nodding his head back there, I think he said he had it all.
Where does the money go? What, what is this money going to pay for?
It will pay for a consulting firm to come in and do this work. This is be, this is beyond our ability as staff to do it, as you may recall. We don't have even one HR position in, in our organization, so we would get a, we would get a firm that specializes in this to do this work.
I think that's about the right number to have for this staff.
It may be less.
So, and this, this kind of mirrors what I've heard as I went around to the various departments and interviewed the employees, is that it's lots of, lots of discussion about job descriptions amongst the staff, fire department being one of the main ones as compared to the police department, and more labor grades in there, and I think what this does is it helps us, it really helps the employees be able to make more steps along the way, potentially, depending on how, what the outcome is. So, you know, and you're not asking for additional money out of the unappropriated fund balance, and you'll come back to us if this isn't, if you can't make this work.
If I can't make it work, I won't come back to you, I just want...
Okay.
Don't, I don't want any, any department heads here that that's even possible.
Okay. So, is it, I guess, first is, do we want to amend the agenda and put this resolution on there?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, do we, I think we technically have to amend the agenda, don't we?
Yeah.
Well, he's kind of added...
Well, he's kind of added it into his as one of his source of funding.
We can do it cleanly. We can do it, we can do it cleanly if it's a.
I think that's kind of a stretch.
I would prefer that you amend.
I move that we amend the agenda to include this resolution as a item of action.
A motion made and seconded to amend the agenda to include a resolution authorizing the update of the employee job descriptions and exemption, non-exempt classification status. Okay?
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and is somebody prepared to make a motion to adopt the resolution or reject it?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the update of employee job descriptions and exempt exemption, non-exempt classification under FLSA, Fair Labor Standards Act.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion on this? Not, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt. Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Randy, for letting you do and look out for the employees. And, boy, feels like we're on our downhill slide here, and we're just gonna talk about an ordinance now to make move money around in the amount of $17,000. And be prepared to listen to City Manager tell us what needs to be done, or Theresa?
It's fairly self-explanatory. This is what we believe to be the closing entries for the previous fiscal year, the one recently concluded. We unfortunately had some additional expenses and corrections that were our responsibility. That's part of it. In addition to that, the most major item is the happy addition of 54 additional $1,000 in state highway money. Tracy, you want to come hit anything else important that I missed? You see that we're transferring within, we're not pulling money out of the fund balance to get this done, but between between legal and how come I missed reading this right? Inspections and corrections, those are the are the areas that needed some additional money. And Tracy, do you want to add anything to it?
Okay. Is that $54,000 in highway maintenance, does that put us back where we were before we were cut?
Does it put us back where we were before we cut? I think the answer is no, but it's a it's a significant boost.
We were cut about two months ago in what we could do with the state money for for road maintenance. And I'm just wondering whether this 54,000 put us back up there where we were before the cut?
I don't think so. I don't think so.
You know it all? Okay. A couple of months ago, this maybe we're thinking about, we we had the paving bids come back up, and Tom was talking about the fact that prices had escalated to the point that what we could do.
Yeah, okay.
This will take us a long way back to breaking to breaking even essentially this year. I don't think it breaks us even, but it gets us pretty close.
Gets us a little bit more.
Probably escalation clause, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Any other questions? No, is anyone prepared to make a motion? Which may I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2010 and 11? And motion made and seconded, any further discussion on this? Now, Judy, please follow up.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and I guess now we are to comments to the City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll be brief. I just would like to say thank you on behalf of all of our employees for your decision of a few minutes ago. One thing is for certain, as you debated the the options, it wasn't lost on any of us that that your desire to to do the right thing by your city employees was always first in in everyone's discussion, so I thank you for that, and I also thank you for adding the the additional item. That's something that is sorely overdue, and with that, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Ray?
Just to follow up on something that was talking about earlier with the debris drop off, I had occasion to use that on Saturday, and while I the short time I was there, there were 10 people, and I have had many compliments about what a good service that is. One, that was kind of, I think it was a compliment, a fellow said, that's the best thing the city's done in a long time.
Sounds like a compliment to me.
I guess that was a compliment, but it certainly was. It certainly was for for the public works folks, but the the folks doing it were very efficient, very helpful, everything went very nicely.
Done what they call left-handed, don't they?
I think so.
Anything else? Buddy?
I'd just like to thank Crosby Forest for organizing the bye boat visit to Pecoson. That was very successful, and for the Pecoson Yacht Club for hosting it. Over 70 people came down to visit and enjoyed the free dinner that that the yacht club provided, and I tell you, if you missed it, it's a piece of history that's going away fast. All of these bye boats, we expected four and we got five. They're all privately owned, and once the owners decide that they're tired of spending their money keeping this history alive, it they're gonna be gone. The only one I know of that's publicly owned is the FD Crockett, and that will be back for the the workboat race. But I'd like to thank Crosby for organizing that, and it was a great success.
Buddy, while you got the floor, can you put a plug in for the seafood festival race?
Sure, yeah. The seafood workboat festival race is gonna be October the 8th. We're gonna have a lot of good events. The Coast Guard has agreed to do a rescue show or either a static display. We're gonna have the Smith Island boats, they're gonna actually do a race this year. We're gonna have vendors for kettle corn and funnel cakes, and of course, there'll be the traditional fare of hot dogs and hamburgers, and we're also gonna have a moonwalk for the kids, so give the kids something to do. And the night before, we're gonna host for the watermen who are gonna race a bluegrass band at the point, so it's shaping up to be a very good, successful event.
Thanks.
There's a fishing tournament associated with that as well.
Yeah.
Frank?
Yeah, just a couple of late comments that I should have made July and didn't. The Pecoson Barracuda Swim Team and the City Manager had it in his his notes to us. Back in early July, they ran a charity swim where they swam for laps, and people gave them so much money per lap, and they raised like $1,800, and all the money was gonna go to, I think, buy school supplies for Pecoson students, if I'm right.
Yes.
Which is, we started that back like in 1987, 1988, so I'm really glad to see that every year they still that they keep doing something for charity. The second thing was, and again, was mentioned, was the the annual swim meet they had where they competed against 20 other 22 other teams. The Pecoson team came in fourth, which was really good, thinking about all the other teams that they competed against, and we had two swimmers, and I wish I had their names offhand, I can't remember them, who broke records that had been around for a long time. And when you look at some of the caliber swimming swimmers who came out of this area, today's, no, the other, it was last Friday's or maybe the July 29th paper, had Katie Hough in there, who won a gold medal in relay event, and David Waters out of TAB, who swam for TAB High School, who led who swam the Olympics two years ago, and he's also on the world team this year swimming and has won a gold also. So for the person to win or to beat some of these longstanding records, it's quite an achievement. That's all, sir.
The young lady that broke the three records was Athena Tuma. She broke the girls' record in individual medley, 50-meter breaststroke, and 50-meter butterfly, records that had stood for more than two decades.
I may have those records.
She broke your records, Frank?
She may have.
I hope not. We're not talking about 78.
Okay. Anything else, Frank?
No, that's all.
Bud?
Yeah, a couple of things. First off, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the blood drive and made that such a successful event and going 30% over what the goal was. The other thing is I'd like to congratulate Deborah Blackstock on her award for the Library Advisory Board, and speaking of the library, they do a really good job. Want to toss in the the Pecoson Museum also. Pecoson Museum does an excellent job, and I recommend everybody in the city go by the Pecoson Museum. But back to the library, I just visited the library myself yesterday and re-registered so that I could download books digitally. They're doing those kind of things these days, and, you know, reading is a really good thing. It's one of the things that I got away from when I was in school, and I'm getting back to it, and you can learn a lot from books. I recommend that everybody go back to reading some books and visiting our library. Just a little sidebar, I read a book called The Few by, what's the gentleman's name? Alex Kershaw. And everyone heard Winston Churchill when he talked about his speech in history where he said never, or something like, never, and of course, the history has so much been owed by so many to so few. Many people don't know that that was a speech that he issued at the funeral of an American serviceman, who died flying for Britain to vending Britain in the Battle of Britain. And I learned that from the book, The Few. Reading books will will expand your knowledge, it's a good thing. Library's also having a a presentation Wednesday, August the 4th at 10:00 PM. It's being supported by the Pecoson Kiwanis Club, they're providing hot dogs, they're gonna have a magic show, recommend that you go out to that. And then the next comment is to the city employees. I sincerely apologize for my first no vote. I would like to have done the yes vote. I'm glad I was able to do the other vote. You deserve more. For the people who didn't see our work session, the EPA is putting tremendous restrictions and and requirements upon the city. We do not know what those costs are gonna be. We're gonna hear from Randy on on a first cut at those. It could go into the millions, and FSR plus funds could go away just like that, and we may even have to increase taxes to cover the rest. We don't know what's gonna happen there. We're waiting to hear that. And for that reason, you know, like in my previous life, I did something that I didn't really want to do. Sometimes it's required, that's what I'm here for, voting no on the first vote. Wish it was yes, I'm glad the second one was, and and if our finances get better, I will certainly be one of the first to step up and give you more. Thank you very much.
There's a an election tomorrow, it's the Republican primary, but probably because there are no Democratic contenders at this time, it'll it will decide probably who's gonna actually hold the office. So if you want to have a say, tomorrow's a good day to go out and do it one way, Doug. That's that's all I got.
Yeah, absolutely. Vote for either candidate at your discretion, but there's actually two primaries that affect our area. One is for the Attorney General, and the second being for State Senate.
Right.
Okay, so both of those are important.
Commonwealth attorney.
Commonwealth, sorry, I'm sorry. Commonwealth attorney and State Senate. Bottom line is, they both affect Pecoson, so please vote and vote at your your discretion. Share a couple of comments, and I apologize to council, I want to talk about a couple of things here. First is that, to let you all know, economic development is a is basically something that we've talked about, trying to increase the the revenue streams of the city of Pecoson. We've had some early successes. I think everybody in the city sees the new construction going on, so I'm not gonna go back through that, but we've got four other businesses that that we've landed here with a minimal of communication, but a tremendous amount of staff help. So appreciate that movement, I think it will will bloom to more, but the second part of this economic development structure, that I entertained the working watermen here in this room about a week ago, as part of economic development. We sent out 130 or so invites, we we got a smaller than what I would have liked to audience, but we got an audience, and the message was clear that the the city's not just looking at business improvements up here in the With Creek Corridor, but also at the working watermen and Messick Point, and how do we protect and how do we give them the tools that they need to be more successful? And the more successful they are, the more successful we'll be as a city. So it's 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 not a one-way conversation where we're only thinking businesses on With Creek Road, and I want to make sure that that's new. Second key message is, we we've met today with our state senator, our new state senator for us, but he's not a new state senator, Tommy Norman, and we talked about issues that we just carried out in the in the work session. Among them, TOPS was actually a discussion on education. That was the first topic of discussion, and basically an understanding with Tommy that that state support of the education system within our city is very challenged, and that we don't seem to be seeing a reward for a high-performing school system. There's plenty of rewards for a low-performing school system, not very many for a high-performing school system, and any help in that regard would be greatly appreciated. Then we talked about probably the second highest dollar item on here, the one that Bud's talked about a couple of times, which is TMDL, and how much of that makes sense or does not make sense for the city of Pecoson, and lots more communication to come on that issue. But the city staff and and the city council are engaged on that issue with all the legislators, both national and state, to try and get some a fence wrapped around this issue. I'll tell you, it's it's the hardest issue we've had in a while from a risk standpoint, a risk to our financial condition, and the risk that there would be a new revenue stream needed to do something like that, or a new tax, if you will. You can call it what you want, but it would be a stormwater fee or tax that is being discussed to to fund something like that. It's basically a step out of the box of what we're used to. And if you want to call it an unfunded mandate, it definitely fits that bill. Those are the two big issues that I think has the the majority of my concern with the with the state senator today. Last but not least, was the discussion in the paper in the last day or so about the school board and the discussion of needed facilities to support our schools. I'll tell you that the the message of the school board is is fair, and the message of the school board is that they need to look at all their options. Okay? I'm not sure that that's what came across in the article that I read. It sounded like it was a foregone conclusion that a school needed to go, or that we would somehow take down the middle school without a whole lot of thought. And I just want to assure the the public, the viewing public, that we are looking at all options in these economic times to reduce spending. The schools are doing the right thing and looking at their options to reduce spending. And I think that the article should have stopped right there and not gone into, because I into the specifics or a single conclusion of what could be a a multi-pronged approach. We don't know what that study's gonna come out and say, but I applaud them for looking at the financial condition of their school and to look at ways to save a significant chunk of dollars. I'll tell you that that every citizen in this city should know one important fact, and that is, our school population is decreasing. It and it flies in the face of a lot of people that come and anti-development, or they're anti-this, but we're down 300 students, another 300, and basically the capacity of one of the schools is met. That's why they're looking. Okay? What we don't know is what the conclusion of that will be, and I think we just need to give that committee time to go through those options, and we need to stay relaxed about it and not rush to conclusions of we're gonna take down a school. For all I know, we may idle For all I know, we may idle one for a period of time, see what population does, I don't know. I just don't know, and I think that's what everybody needs to be thinking, is that the school board is doing the right thing and looking, but don't draw any conclusions from it, as the press reports seem to immediately jump to. Okay? And that, that's the only thing I want to say tonight, as far as that's concerned. All right, anything else from council? If not, I know we have a closed session to, to go to. Okay, have a motion to go to closed session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we convene a closed session pursuant to Section 2.23711a3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to discuss the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, i.e., park in the Western Precinct.
Okay, have a motion made and seconded, and Judy?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, we are in closer.